We're going to bring the Board of County Commissioners back to order. Before we get started with the-
Mr. Chairman, if you want me to-
Mr. County Attorney.
So, we've taken the position for this meeting up till now that the senior member of the Board would act as Chair.
Yeah.
But, as the Clerk points out to me, that's not really in your rules. And there are documents that Commissioner Mariano will need to sign. So I'll need a motion to appoint him Acting Chair for today's meeting.
I will move to have our senior member be Chair today.
Should I make an 80s comment?
After a second.
I'm older than him, he's just been here longer.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And it's not senior as to age, it's senior years on the board.
Tenure, tenure.
I'm the elder.
And the first order of business of P. 39, do we have proof?
P. 39, we have proof of publication in the February 7th edition of the Tampa Bay Times, along with affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item P. 39 is an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 03, from ROR Retail Office Residential to IL Industrial Light on approximately 16.84 acres of real property located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Diagonal Road and New York Avenue, and providing for an additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer servability and effective date. This item is recommended for a continuance to a date uncertain.
Move to continue.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P. 40, do we have proof?
We have proof of publication in the November 22nd edition of the Tampa Bay Times. This item was continued from the December 5th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners' meeting to time certain this day.
Item P. 40 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 03, from ROR Retail Office Residential to IL Industrial Light on approximately 10 acres of real property located on New York Avenue, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer servability and an effective date. This item also comes with a recommendation of a continuance to a date uncertain.
Move to continue.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? P. 41.
P. 41 was published in the January 3rd edition of the Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site posting.
Item P. 41 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 05, from RES 1, residential one dwelling unit per gross acre, to CON commercial on approximately 4.00 acres of real property located at the intersection of Shady Hills Road and Helen K. Drive, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer servability and an effective date. And this is a- this comes with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. This is a small-scale comprehensive plan.
Okay. Commissioner Waitman.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Chair, I know it's only four acres, so it doesn't fit really in the live local bubble, but it's talking to goose to another commercial piece that doesn't have the deed restriction on it, is there?
Uh, I believe there will be a deed restriction placed on the property. It doesn't happen at the comprehensive plan stage.
So make sure that, in the bigger picture of this, that it wasn't tied into a neighboring parcel where we could find ourselves in a vulnerable situation.
Yes, it's been the common practice now to deed restrict.
Okay.
The property's at the zoning stage, zoning phase.
Do we hear any more from staff? Uh, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here from the public like to speak to this item?
We have no one signed up in advance.
Okay, anyone on WebEx?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, so is anyone in the audience who want to speak to this item?
Well, I did have a question for staff.
Okay.
I'm looking forward to it.
Let me just finish public comment at this point. So I'm going to close public comments seeing no one come forward. Uh, Commissioner Starkey.
I know we talk about widening Shady Hills Road in the future. Is there someone from Terry or someone? My question is, are we reserving property to put a multi-use path in front of this? Do we know what's- if we're widening this road, do we know which side of the road will have a wider pedestrian opportunity? And are we reserving that? I'm looking to see- we've asked for those kind of things to be in here, so I'm looking to see if it's in here, because I didn't have access to this yesterday, so.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Nicky Wren, County Engineer. Comp Plan does call for a four-lane facility, and the typical section, we would assume, to build on this corridor would include a 12-foot multi-use path, presumably on the east side of the corridor. And that would be because of the location of three schools on the east side and the typical sections, say, put it on the east side, unless there's reason to locate it on the west.
Well, there is a park- is the park on the west side? Is Veterans on here, or is that on-
Cruz Lakes on the right-hand side.
And nothing else?
East side.
Okay, is Veterans on Hayes? Which road is Veterans on?
Uh, that's on Hicks Road.
Oh, Hicks, Hicks. Okay, well, I just want to make sure we are taking care of future mobility.
So, Nick, if I could sort of follow. So if it's on one side of the road, it's a 12-foot path, the other one, we'll at least have a look, at least a five-foot.
Five-foot sidewalk.
Okay.
Yep, by typical section, 124 feet.
One of those two, the next stage will address that.
Five foot on the west, four vehicle travel lanes, 12 foot on the east, but multimodal connectivity throughout the whole corridor.
Okay.
And any right-of-way conveyance conditions we impose on development along the corridor is consistent with the desired right-of-way identified in our Comp Plan, 124 feet.
But do we show that anywhere in here?
Well, this is at the comprehensive plan stage.
True.
So you see it in the zoning.
Every zoning, okay. But I want to make sure the applicant is aware that it's coming.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, if I may answer Mr. Waitman's question more directly. The petitioner has indeed recorded a voluntary deed restriction on the live local. So it's already been done.
Thank you. Very good. All right, public comments closed. Any other questions for staff? If not, we need a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item P. 42.
Proof of publication, Tampa Bay Times, January 3rd, 2024 edition.
Item P. 42 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for tax amendments to Chapter 2, Future Land Use Element, repealing future land use element map series, map 2-2, coastal high hazard areas and evacuation routes, and replacing with map 2-2 coastal high hazard areas and adaptation action areas. Tax amendments to Chapter 4, Coastal Management Element, repealing Coastal Management Element 4-1, coastal area slash coastal high hazard area, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer servability and an effective date. With this item, the Planning and Economic Growth Department is going to actually request a continuance to a date uncertain to address certain stakeholder interests.
Wait, did you say you want a continuance?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Coastals are good with that?
I'm very good with that.
Uh, move to continue to- is it a time certain?
A date uncertain.
Date uncertain.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we neglected to do a roll call vote on that previous ordinance.
That's true, you need to do roll call on ordinances.
So going back to then, P. 41.
P. 41, roll call vote, yes, thank you.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 5, Acting Chair Mariano.
Aye.
Staff caught it, thank you, staff.
Very good.
Okay, now-
P. 41 passes roll call vote.
Now, where were we on the vote for this one?
Roll call for 42.
Is it a roll call as well?
No, not for a continuance.
They're all set with 42, move to 43.
Did we vote? We did vote? He called the vote? Okay, sorry.
43, the December 20th, 2023 edition of the Tampa Bay Times, and then by- supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site posting. There are no one signed up.
Okay.
Item P. 43 is in ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan, providing for a comprehensive plan amendment to the future land use map, map 2-15 and sheet 05 from RES 1, residential one dwelling unit per acre and AGR agricultural rural to CON conservation lands on approximately 318 acres of real property located north of State Road 52 between Suncoast Parkway and US Highway 41, and providing for additional tax amendments as necessary for internal consistency, providing for repealer servability and an effective date. This comes here with a recommendation to approve the proposed comprehensive plan amendment and adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. There's a presentation if so desired.
Okay, then we care for a presentation. All right, let me call for public comment. Anybody here to speak to item P. 43? No one signed up?
No one signed up.
No one on WebEx?
No one online.
So we'll close public comment for P. 43 to the Board.
Move to approve P. 43.
Motion to second, roll call vote.
District 2, Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District 3, Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District 5, Commissioner Mariano.
Mr. Chairman, just for people that are here and listening, we've just added 318 acres of property into the wildlife corridor and is preserved. So that's a good thing, thank you very much.
Okay, now go to the public hearings. Mr. County Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, there are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval and there is no opposition, the application will be considered by the Board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning may at this time request that the petition be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi-judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this Board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the Board's Land Development Code for rezoning. Mr. Clerk, would you like to swear the public in?
So those of you who are wishing to present testimony in any of the upcoming cases, we'd ask that you please rise and raise your right hand. Do each of you swear or affirm that the testimony you will give in that matter is the truth, so help you God.
I do.
All right, please be seated. And again, when you come forward to the podium, just reconfirm that you were sworn.
Denise, item P. 44.
We have proof of publication in the February 7th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Denise Hernandez, Planning and Economic Growth Department. Item P. 44 is PEG 247740. It's a zoning amendment. The names of the residences at Rolling Hills MPUD, Master Planning Unit Development, Dan Nico Properties LLC. The request is to continue the item to the April 23rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
No motion.
Would you continue?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
P. 45, do we have proof?
Have proof of publication again in the February 7th, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
P. 45 is PEG 24CU13, conditional use in the name of Word of Life Fellowship, Word of Life GLA. The request is to continue the item to the April 23rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
No motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Move the continuance, please.
Move to continue.
Move to continue, sorry.
Okay.
Move to continue.
Who with a second, or?
And I will second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Any else?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item P. 46.
On item P. 46, this item was continued from the January 9th, 2024 BCC meeting to February 6th, at which time it was continued to March 12th, where it was continued to today.
So P. 46 is PEG 240024. It's a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2301 Fletcher. And the actual continuance date is the April 23rd, 2024 Board of County Commissioners' meeting at 1:30 in Newport Ritchie.
Would you continue?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And now we go to the consent agenda. Item P. 47, start.
We have proof of publication of this matter in the February 7th, 2024 edition Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
P. 47 is PEG 240171. It's a development agreement for Creola Estates LLC. It's a development agreement for the construction of the multi-use path and for the award of mobility fee credits for the design permitting and construction of the off-site improvements of the multi-use path and for the difference between the cost of the required five-foot sidewalk onsite and the constructed multi-use path. Comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Economic Growth Department and the local planning agency who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience online to speak in opposition to item P. 47? Seeing no one, leave it on consent. Item P. 48.
Proof of publication again in the February 7th Tampa Bay Times and supplemented by certified mailings and site postings.
P. 48 is PEG 247770, zoning amendment, Brina M. Hicks. It's for a change in zoning from an RMH mobile home district to a PO1 professional office district. Comes here with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Economic Growth Department, sorry, and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak in opposition of item P. 48? Leave it on consent.
And that concludes your consent agenda.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion passes. Item P. 49, do we have proof?
We have proof of publication again in the February 7th, 2024 edition Tampa Bay Times, supplemented by affidavit of certified mailings and site postings.
Good afternoon, William Vermillion, Planning and Economic Growth. This is item P. 49, PEG 247734, the J. Mar Palms MPUD. Here's its location map in the northwestern portion of the county along US 19, just south of County Line Road. This rezoning is from MPUD to MPUD. The previous MPUD is expired. It was to allow 499 RV spaces at the time. This new MPUD will be allowing for 250 platted townhomes on approximately 42.8 acres, and will have two access points on US 19 and an emergency access there on Kreischer Lane to the north. Here's that location map. The existing zoning reflecting MPUD. The existing future land use of Residential 24. Here is a contextual map to show some other projects in the vicinity. You'll see the Heritage Pines MPUD and DRI there to the north, as well as US 19 and County Line Road. Arepica Heights MPUD as well, and the SunWest Harbor Town MPUD. And to give you, Commissioners, some context on the development within those MPUDs, the Heritage Pine DRI was approved for 969 dwelling units and 45,000 square feet of non-residential. The Arepica Heights MPUD was approved for 235 single-family detached. And the SunWest Harbor Town DRI was approved for 350 single-family detached, 2,150 multifamily dwelling units, 250,000 square feet of COM, 50,000 square feet of office, 250 hotel rooms, 18-hole golf course, and 50 slips on a marina. Here's this project's master plan. As you can see here, those two accesses on US 19, as well as the emergency access there to the north on Kreischer. The applicant is also going to be connecting their internal sidewalks to those commercial out parcels that you see there with the numbers 21, 22, and 23 on them, as well as sidewalk connections to the existing sidewalk on US 19 that takes you north to County Line Road and to the 12-foot multi-use path that runs along County Line Road. Here is the non-binding conceptual plan, and the applicant informed me that after meetings with conditioner- commissioners, they made changes to this to allow for more parking within this MPUD for the townhomes, and this is reflected here on this plan. The applicant is requesting one variation from 901611 that is to not provide interconnects to the east and the south, and that is due to the existing platted residential homes. There was one additional change that happened to planning commission from the original proposal. We changed the language on the buffering for this MPUD to reflect an opaque fence to ensure the residents that this fence would not be able to see through. The applicant is also giving an increased buffer above and beyond the LDC requirements to mitigate some of those concerns on the south and east from those residential lots. And with that, that comes to you guys with a recommendation of approval with conditions from Planning and Economic Growth as well as the Planning Commission. I'm available for any questions.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I just have one comment, I think. It used to be that everyone did brick or masonry walls, and now I know we're getting to these vinyl walls. My only issue with those is that if you don't clean it or keep it maintained, they stop falling apart. And so I would want a condition in there that it has to be kept clean, and I don't know what the right word is, but it doesn't do anyone any good when a wall is falling apart and has mold all over it, because I see those around the county. Because otherwise, I'm going to start going back to requiring masonry or brick walls.
I don't know if you put that in the code or not, in the condition.
We can put these in the conditions of approval. That's-
Absolutely, and the applicant is here and can speak to their consent on adding that condition.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't think that's it.
Okay, all right, the applicant?
Good afternoon, Kami Corbett with the Law Firm of Hillward in Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 3700, Tampa, Florida, and I have been sworn. We do have a very brief presentation. William did a great job, so I don't want to be repetitive to his slides. The applicant is Meritage Homes. They're one of the fifth-largest home builders in the United States. Their target market is really that first-time homebuyer and first-time move-up, so they're important in the market for our working families. And they are industry leader in energy efficiency. They also have reviewed many awards for customer service, and they rank highly against, especially this Tampa division, against national home builders in the area. Again, this is the subject property. You can see the future land uses in the surrounding area. This property is unusual. It has a future land use of RES 24, and it is surrounded by RES 6, RES 12, and RES 9. And again, the project details are it's 42.8 acres, and we're asking for 250 likely townhomes, but we are asking for an option for villas as well. And on the left is the existing site plan for the 499 RV units that were approved for this location. And on the right is our proposed plan, which takes the density down to about half of that, and we are offering fee simple, single-family ownership opportunities. This was our original plan that we filed and that we shared at our community meeting. We only showed a 20-foot offset buffer and no fencing whatsoever there. We had our dog park located towards the north of the site, and then we had our neighborhood park in the central. And then at that time, we only had 81 visitor parking spaces and a total of 105. After input both from the residents and commissioner meetings, we have made changes. We have increased that buffer to a 35-foot buffer and agreed to shade trees every 60 linear feet with shrubs and an outside fence. And the fence is a six-foot fence visual screen. We would be amenable to conditions that require us to keep them clean. I think we already have a condition that the HOA has to maintain that, but if there's additional language that the commission would like to add, we certainly would be willing to entertain that. And then again, we've upped those visitor parking spaces to 125, and we're offering a total of 149 parking spaces now. These are elevations of the townhomes. We do have all of the conditions from your PM 26 memorandum, even though we were under review prior to the adoption of that. We did agree to all of those conditions that implement PM 26. We do want to understand your vision and have heard your concerns loudly and clearly about things looking like barracks and not wanting that condition to exist in your community. And again, comparing the prior approved to the proposed, we're going down from 499 RV spaces, and we're doing 250 single-family attached units. And again, going from 24 units the acre to just under 60 units the acre. And then we're increasing the buffering and fencing requirement. And so overall, the feedback that we received at the community meeting, we did have people that were concerned, but we did receive a lot of feedback from people who are happy that we were not no longer having the RV spaces, that we were providing a more permanent living opportunity here on this site. The neighborhood commercial directing abutting us was very happy about the opportunity the opportunity to have a thriving community located right behind them to help their businesses survive. And in the end, we've been found consistent and compatible by your staff. We believe that we enhance the area and complement the existing residential development pattern in the surrounding area, full compliance with PM26, and then we're providing those two access points onto US-19, and we have no wetlands on site. And then we have the conditions that we have reviewed in our agreement with, and we are here to answer any questions you might have. We have our civil engineer, our environmental scientist, and our planner, and our traffic engineer. So do you have any questions?
I want to say, I do appreciate the meetings we had. You helped move that parking number up, because as we've talked before about so many times, you get these townhome projects that just don't have enough and try to squeeze everybody in, so I appreciate that, and any questions from...
Well, I'm just going to say, as everyone knows, I wish they were rear-loaded, because I just don't think townhomes work well front-loaded. Can you go back to those pictures? The elevations. So what are we doing as far as trees? And then when I look, I see there's a magnolia there. Are we... What kind of trees are we putting in in the front of the townhomes?
I'm going to ask Betsy Jolly, who's the planner.
Okay.
For Meritage Homes.
Hi, I'm Betsy Jolly, certified planner, forward planning manager for Meritage Homes, the applicant. We're adopting all the standards of PM26, including the tree requirements for townhomes. I think it's a shade tree in the front.
Okay, and the shade tree's not a crepe myrtle?
No, I think we took out the substitution language that was previously available, and we're meeting the current staff's condition.
And a palm tree isn't a shade tree either, so what are... I'm just curious what we're putting in, because I've been driving by, and granted, I may not have seen, come to any of the new ones with the new restrictions yet. I'd like to see some. Someone will tell me where some of the new ones are. I'll show you a picture of one I went through at Oakley Growth the other day, but it's That site looks pretty heavily wooded, and so I'm sure if you're taking out more trees than you're putting back in, you're paying into the tree mitigation trust fund, which is kind of our typical deal.
All right.
Hey? Sorry.
Not the landscape architect, but the engineer. I will do my best. Yes, we'll be paying the $500 a unit for the tree mitigation fee on this one, for sure.
Yeah, but I really hope that in the spaces where you have, say, in between the buildings or in any open spaces, and I'm guessing now that we're adding more parking spaces in, that's taken out some of the places where you could have put some trees back, but I, for one, it's hard to watch all the trees go down, so I'm just going to start asking for putting in, you know, nice trees wherever you can back onto the property. Not crepe myrtles, not palm trees, some of our oak trees or magnolias, or something that makes a tree canopy would be great.
Fair enough. That makes sense. And also, just to point out, we do have a lot of extra parking spaces on the site. Typically, we count the parking spaces in our park credits or in our required park acreage. In this case, because that gets a little messy during the review, we actually took all the parking spaces out of the park acreage, which means we've preserved open, green, actual park space, and we're not trying to double-dip and get sidewalk and parking space credit for it. So we actually have a little bit more green space than you normally have for this many units, which will be places to plant trees.
And are you doing single-car driveways for single-car garages?
We'll be back to you in just a second.
Okay.
We are, yes.
Because I just have a thing against double-car driveways for a single-car garage.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, sir. Could you go ahead and just put your name on the record?
Yes. Joe Semino, WRA Engineering, 12363 Hampton Park Drive, or sorry, Hampton Park Boulevard, Tampa, Florida, 33624.
Thank you.
And it's good to see that these are not stucco top and bottom. They've got some exterior additions, enhancements, whatever.
Commissioner Starkey, if I could, condition 14 deals with the shade trees. It doesn't specify what type of trees, but if you would like to exclude certain types of trees as additional language in this condition, we'd be happy to.
Yeah, I think we just really need to clarify that a crepe myrtle is not a shade tree.
That's it.
Okay, well, I see them all over, so, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
We're here to answer any other questions.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone else? Was anyone from the public here to speak to item P49?
Dr. Marchiot, who's the first one signed up.
He sent us something.
Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Marchiot. I am the retired director of the Pasco County Health Department and have always appreciated the county's support of public health in Pasco County, but I'm here on a different I would like to say that we also spoke, and I represent the committee for the Highlands, so maybe I get my full five minutes, but I would say that we also, several of us spoke at the zoning meeting, and you should also have on file our letter of objection and also a concise copy of what I'm going to talk about at the moment, which shouldn't take too long. We basically feel, and we do appreciate that J. Mar, the owner, by the way, is Miller, not J. Mar yet. I guess that's all in negotiation, but we do appreciate the fact that J. Mar has tried to accommodate some of these issues that we raised, and we appreciated the zoning committee for taking our letter and applying some of those conditions that we requested. But you've got to look at the big picture here. This is 250 units, multi-story, tearing down an entire forest where that will be gone when this project, if it is approved. We still feel very strongly about denying this project, because the big picture is what it does to the character of our community. It just doesn't fit there, okay? So we still feel the zoning should be denied. However, we do appreciate that conditions, a number of conditions we recommended were addressed, so we're pleased with that, and we fully support those conditions if it is in fact approved. We're suggesting that if it is approved, you might consider continuing it to be sure that the conditions that are requested, including some that I'll add, or if you agree with those additional conditions, are fully met, so you may want to consider continuing this request for the permit. We appreciate the buffer zone. That was very important, and frankly, the original designs had this community fence right up against the back of our property, so we really appreciate the zoning committee making that recommendation. We really feel that with this buffer, there will be significant reduced impact on our community, but we are looking at shade trees at every 60 feet. Seems to be a little sparse, and we would like to see it more heavily planted behind that fence, and we're looking at at least every 20 feet and get some decent shade and hide that fence, but that's something you'll have to think about. The fence, in our opinion, and I appreciate what Commissioner Starkey said, plastic fences don't hold up and require a lot of maintenance. They also don't do anything for noise abatement. We recommend it to the zoning board, and we recommend again, that that perimeter fence, except for the exits, be constructed in cinder block with stucco overlay and should be eight feet high. To me, that would, again, work to minimizing the impact of this community on the Highlands and on the Highland properties abutting it. All right, so PVC, I'd give that a lot of thought. That really is not going to be a very adequate fencing. Now, Kreischer Road, which is their emergency exit...
We need to wrap it up?
I'm sorry?
Like we're past the three minutes? I don't see the timer on.
I'm almost finished.
The red light had gone.
Right, I thought I had five minutes, because I'm representing the committee, but whatever. It won't take long, honestly. Kreischer Road should be paved. That is unpaved, and Commissioner Mariano knows what condition that road can get into. So if they're going to use that as an emergency exit, I think fire and rescue should take a hard look at that road to make sure it's in a condition that they can get in and out. We recommend traffic studies during peak traffic hours, because when Merton is pretty much the sole entrance and exit to our community, and when we want to go south on 19, we have to go north on 19 first, go over three lanes, make a U-turn to go south on 19, and anybody that's familiar with that community understands that. Now, that traffic can be very nasty, and that crossover can be hazardous. You're adding 1,000 family, you're adding 250 families with a potential of 1,000 residents that are, again, going to be accessing 19 and adding to that traffic on 19, and we know what 19 is. Wellwater serves Highland residents. It is important to fully understand the impact of this project on the aquifer, particularly their irrigation. Of great concern to community residents is the effect of this project when the rural character of our community. That concern cannot be emphasized enough, and that's really all I have to say. Is there any questions for my comments? Are there?
We don't do question and answer.
I'm sorry?
We don't do question and answer on public comment. We don't do public...
Oh.
We don't do question and answer on public comment.
So I'm done?
You're done.
Thank you.
Thank you, doctor.
Linda Bell.
Hello, my name is Linda Bell. I'm a retired Pasco County schoolteacher, and thank you, Ms. Starkey. I heard about the fence. That was one of my concerns.
Your address, man?
Pardon?
Your address?
Your home address.
Oh, I'm sorry. 18329 Branch Road, Hudson, Florida.
And whether or not you've been sworn.
Pardon?
And whether or not you've been sworn. Have you...
Do you acknowledge that you were sworn?
Oh, yes. Thank you. Okay. One of my biggest concerns is, of course, the water. We're all on private wells, and I happened to see this article in the Wall Street Journal about this lagoon with 37 million gallons of water in Pasco County, the largest in the United States, and I just have a concern where the water is going to come from the new subdivision in back of us. We just had to put in another well, $8,500. And I also talked to the one gentleman over there, and he assured me the last time they were not going to clearcut the trees. Well, I'd like to see that in writing, and Ms. Starkey, thank you again for bringing up the tree situation. And as far as the fence, yes, we also worried about that, that there will be access to emergency builds in back. We've lived in that place, our five acres, for 50 years, and we've had people that set fires in the back, and we've had to have the fire trucks come back there. So we're very concerned that there's going to be access to emergency field vehicles in the back. So that's pretty much my concern, of course, and there's a family of foxes living back there. There's all kinds of animal life. We have a camera set up in the back, a kind of a sporting, and we see all the animals at night that walk around back there, and that's our concern, too. And one gentleman mentioned about property rights when we were here before, and I can agree with property rights. If you have agricultural land, why don't you have the right to keep it agricultural? You don't have to constantly make every single agricultural into residential. We really need some green on the ground and some blue in the sky. Oh, I have one minute?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's about all. I don't know that what we can do at this point, of course, we'd like to keep it, whoops, we'd like to keep it pristine like it is now, but we would appreciate any help you could give us as far as the water situation. I did not hear where the water is coming from. Where are they going to get all that? Where did 37 million gallons of water come for this lagoon thing, 14 acres? So water is my concern, sewage is my concern, and the animals and the trees are my concern. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to this item?
Mr. Chairman, we've just been, I believe there was an ex parte communication that needed to be made, accepted to the record from Dr. Yott to staff. Is that correct?
Anyone else from the public want to speak to this item? Anyone on WebEx?
No, sir. No one on WebEx.
Okay, so we'll close public comment, back to the applicant, if you could address some of the concerns were brought up.
Yes, sir. Kami Corbett, again, for the record. I'd like to have Steve Henry come up and address the condition of Kreischer Road and its suitability as emergency access in its current condition.
And can you answer the water question real fast? I think I heard you're hooking up to the county?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not wellwater. There won't be wells.
All right, so to be clear, water and sewer will be set up with Pasco County Utilities. Okay.
Good afternoon. Steve Henry, Lincoln Associates, 5023 West Laurel, Tampa, 33607, and I have been sworn. As far as the emergency access to Kreischer Road, so that is, one, it's an emergency, so it'll be gated, so other than emergency services, but the reality is, from a code standpoint, we don't need it. We have two accesses to US-19, so for this number of units, we'd only be required to have one access and one emergency access. We actually have two full accesses to directional median openings to US-19. So the reality is, if the board decides that we don't need that access or because of the residents, we're happy taking that off. That was really a request from staff to put that access on there as an emergency access. But again, it would be gated and used solely for emergency services. Thank you.
I also heard some concerns about species and wildlife. Of course, we already have conditions in our PD that require us to do the requisite studies prior to any kind of construction development and to follow all state, federal, and local laws regarding that. There's a concern about two-story residences. Our maximum height here is 35 feet, just like the adjacent residential. They can build two-story, 35 feet on their side as well. I did hear the request to move the trees to 20 feet apart instead of the 60 feet apart. According to our civil engineer, that is too close, but if the board would like to consider having them 30 feet apart instead of 60 feet apart, that's something the applicant is willing to agree to.
That'd be nice. I'd like that.
Okay. And the condition 11 is the condition, open space and buffering condition, that talks about having to have the fence maintained by an HOA or a CDD. And if there's anything else you'd like us to address, anyone on our team can do so, but otherwise, we just respectfully reiterate that we are a significant reduction in density that's much more compatible with the area than what's already approved, and we would respectfully request your approval.
Mr. Chairman.
It's county attorney.
So while that condition 11 references open space, it has no reference to the fence itself.
It can be included.
So, yeah, so I was going to recommend that it be added to, maybe we modify both the linear feed in 10 and add, "Developers' conditions, covenants, and restrictions shall provide for maintenance, repair, and replacement of the opaque fence," since the opaque fence is referenced in that condition.
That would be more than acceptable to us. Thank you.
Okay. To the board.
For me, I think the emergency gate is good. One day, the county will come in and fix Kreischer, so that'll take care of that, because we're changing the way we maintain the roads, and it is a significant reduction. I just want to make sure that fence is maintained and that the trees, as much as possible, are put back in. So with that, you know, this gentleman, this property cannot stay ag. Coming from an ag family, you know, we tried it with our blueberry farm, but it's not profitable, and you can't ask a person to do something that costs them money, and this just is not the right place for ag. We do buy land...
The zoning is actually MPUD. It just doesn't have a site plan approval.
Yeah, so, I mean, they were asking, why can't it be ag?
And it's rez 24. As your future land...
Yeah, this is a doubt, this is an improvement over what could have been there. That mobile home park had been there, there would have been no trees. But just making the comment on ag, because we hear it a lot, and whenever we can in the county, we're buying people's land who are willing to put a conservation easement or just sell it to the county, and just before this, we did buy, I think it was 381 acres, 341 acres.
Eighteen.
So we do that with our ELAM money, and thank you very much. That's from our penny for Pasco, and we'll buy up all we can. But this land is going to get developed, and I think this is a good plan. I just wish it was rear-loaded, but for me, I will vote yes with the changes.
And I'm happy to see that they're going to move the trees to 30 feet, actually. That was the number I wrote down, because that 20 would be too tight. I'm happy to see that. This density, again, rez 24, could have been a lot stronger, a lot worse. It is a big step down. Instead of 24 units per acre, they're at six. That's a pretty good step. And you're right on US-19. They're right on US-19, so I think between that and the buffer, it's probably the best situation you'd see coming out here for development.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so I'll second Commissioner Starkey's motion with central hooking the county water and sewer, moving trees every 30 feet, and that the HOA or CDD is going to regularly maintain the fence.
Okay. If I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's not, does not have to be roll call?
No.
Okay, aye.
Okay. All right, motion passed 3-0.
I do have some concerns about the property to the north of Kreischer. I'm always up here looking around on my iPad when I'm looking at rezonings and things, and I'm not sure those businesses up there are legal, and if these people are on wells and they're storing all these trucks up there, I just want our staff to take a look and make sure that the properties and the businesses to the north of Kreischer have the proper zoning and approvals to be there.
Okay.
Don't want anyone with contaminated wells.
Moving to item P50. Do we have proof?
We have proof of publication in the March 13, 2024, I'm sorry, correction, February 7 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Tammy Snyder, Planning and Economic Growth Department. We have item P50, zoning amendment for Beacon Woods East, MPUD, PEG 247742, zoning amendment from MPUD to MPUD to amend the master plan, excuse me, and conditions of approval to set forth passive uses that may occur in golf course areas. Location is west-central Pasco County, north of 5A Road, and extending west of Little Road for approximately one and a half miles. And there is the location map. Current zoning districts, future land use. Context map, we have several schools, parks, hospitals. Here's the revised master plan. The conditions of approval were revised to include additional specific areas that may be allowed, specific uses that may be allowed in the golf course areas. Neighborhood park, the entrance road, utilities, floodplain compensation, drainage, and the most recent change that occurred since the last BCC hearing is controlled plants, gardens, trees, palms, or silviculture. And with that, we recommend approval with conditions.
Tammy, would you explain the conditions as far as the golf course properties that that's going to be, have the opportunity to be given to the HOAs?
Yes, golf course areas will, should the HOAs be able to and be amenable... Yes, golf course areas will, should the HOAs be able to and be amenable to accepting them, they will be gifted to them for their use as parks and open space and drainage and all that good stuff.
And if they do accept the properties, they'll be able then even ask the developer to come forward to take out trees that are in the stormwater pond?
That will be up to the HOAs, yes. That is in the conditions of approval.
Okay, very good. Any questions for staff?
Nope, I am good with this one. I'm sorry they had to wait so long.
All right, so I know we have some speakers here.
Well, applicant first.
Oh, I'm sorry, applicant, sorry.
Good afternoon. Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Ritchie. I can't imagine what else could be said about this one. Planning commission went very well. Everything's been very well received. I think we finally got all the solutions here to work for everybody. So, I'm kind of proud of it, and hopefully, public comment will go well, and you'll support staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from public here? Carol?
We have, the first one signed up is Karen Crowe.
Hello, Karen Crowe, 9148 Water Hazard, Fairway Oaks. And I have been sworn in. I'm here representing our HOA finally. I'd like to thank you for the time and flexibility from Commissioner Mariana and the entire board. It has taken a very long time for us to be able to get through our paperwork. And thanks to the county attorney, Goldstein, we are now in the process of getting another opinion to allow our residents to vote on acceptance of this property. Until this time, we have not been able to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also signed up would be Jeff Baumgartner.
Jeff Baumgartner, 7612, Sylvan Drive, Hudson, Florida. Thank you, Commissioners, for taking the time.
You've been sworn, Mr. Baumgartner? You've been sworn?
Yes, I've been sworn.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners, for taking the time to look at this one more time. I just think, after looking at the last proposal and everybody talking about the trees and the beauty of a new development, where this already has a real nice buffer of pine trees around, I've been noticing a lot more nature and birds and things like that. So, I think you should take the advantage that we have right now of already being put in place. And thank you for your time.
Jack Bremet.
I have been duly sworn in. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and fellow Commissioners, and legal counsel as well.
And Jack, your address?
My name is Jack Bremet.
I'm sorry.
And I live at 8542 Coral Creek Loop in Hudson, Florida. I am the president of our local HOA for the Estates and Reserve of Beacon Woods. And I represent 480 homeowners. There's an old motto, "The states take things if you find them, but leave them not so." Our community has been trying to do this for five years. In 2019, when the golf course closed, we've been trying to get this to today for that amount of time. On January 21, 2023, our community voted 87% to accept the offer of 25 acres of the Oleek's Golf Course and the responsibility to maintain it, the said property. Because of the delays of getting to today, in November 1 last year, we signed a short-term lease agreement with Mr. Lowman to lease this property so that we could take care of it. Accordingly, we have purchased the necessary liability insurance. We've also purchased a commercial lawnmower to take care of this property. I say all this to let you know that we have skin in this game. We have had countless hours of volunteer labor from our people to prepare the golf course for mowing. And every time we have one of these sessions, the first thing they ask me at the end of it, "When can we do this again?" So, our attitude, the attitude of our people, I couldn't ask for more from them. I'd like to take this opportunity, publicly, to thank also the Lowman family for their generosity and allowing this property to become our property. We look forward to using this to enhance the value of our properties as well. In addition to 25 acres being gifted to us, old fairways 1, 2, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10, and 18 will be taken care of by the new HOA for the enclave of Beacon Woods. This is a green area for them to take care of, and the people that live on those fairways look forward to that being taken care of equally. Today's vote will finalize the planning for this project and has been waited for by our residents for many months now. Since the closing of the golf course in 2019, this issue has been one that has divided us, and today is one that unites us. We are backed by the people in our community, and they're looking forward to having this property transferred. I'm here today to ask you to vote a positive for this amendment, planning amendment, and I hope that that vote will be unanimous among you. In closing, I would like to say, although this process has been frustrating at times because it's taken so long, I respect the process. I do. And I know that the i's have to be dotted, t's have to be crossed, and I'm good with that. And I thank you for the service each of you rendered to the people of Pasco County. Thank you for your time.
Joe Sears.
Honorable Commissioners, Commissioners, I have been confirmed. It happened a long time ago. It was also happened today. So, my name is Joe Sears. I'm a property owner and live at 13915 Talmage Loop in Hudson. This is in the reserve in the estates. It's adjacent to the development proposed by NVR Incorporated, Ryan Holmes, and referred to as the enclave of Beacon Woods. Your approval, and I hope is unanimous approval today, is key to the success of our community and home values, and we thank you for your collective vision in doing so. I'd like also to thank Ben Wilson of NVR Incorporated for the time he has spent meeting with our community. The Pasco County, also the Pasco County Planning Commission for their review and approval last month, and especially the Lowman family, whose incredibly generous land gift to our community will impact our community today and for future families. It's been, as Jack mentioned, a five-year journey since our community golf course ceased to operate. By golf course standards, it was marginal, but it was ours. And we spent many happy hours teaching children and grandchildren how to play. It was a course that supported the Hudson High Golf Team. And while we saw golf support wane, we hoped it would always be there. It was no surprise, however, when Mr. Lowman offered memberships, like many other small courses throughout Florida, to keep the course alive. And even those who originally purchased homes on the fairways declined his offer. Indeed, five years ago, I attended meetings with the then-county attorney, enforcement supervisor, and a member of this board, promising Mr. Lowman would be offered a choice to keep the property mowed or he would face consequences. This was, to me, a low point in our negotiations. We saw the fight between the county and landowner drag on. Despite this, Mr. Lowman agreed to meet with a small group of us at our home for a brunch. One option proposed was a conservation easement, which we followed up on, which was considered in 2021, from the information provided through Catherine Starkey's office. And we followed up with Bill Bibby of the Florida Land and Recreation Grant Section in Tennessee. I mention all this because this was not something that was a one-and-done for us. This has been going on, and we have been working hard on this for five years and looking for solutions. We outlined a plan which had required hundreds, if not thousands, of sweat equity person hours to keep originally fairways 2, 3, and 4 cleaned up. They were the first group that, when you drive down Hudson Avenue, you see that. And by the way, it was the homeowners that did this at this time with Mr. Lowman's approval. That was also at no cost to county taxpayers. Unlike other golf courses in the county, over 50,000 evergreen trees were planted on the property by the Lowman family in 2020. This followed up by an additional 500 trees donated from the state implanted by property residents, including yours truly, in early 2021. The trees we nurtured like children, and we are proud today of what we have, which is quieter with owls, wild turkeys, and singing birds, and yes, coyotes, which has always lived there. This results in an aesthetics and neighborhood morale boost. We believe that our home values have improved in part due to the aesthetics of a well-maintained pine forest and serves as a vehicle traffic sound and sight barrier to Hudson Avenue. When Ben and Matt offered 25 acres to our community, our HOA leaders asked homeowners to vote their preference, with 87% saying yes in January 2023. In closing, I urge you to approve this change. It'd be great to see it unanimous, because it's been, for me personally, a long road. The road modification is the best traffic option for safe access into and out of our new homes being built adjacent to our neighborhood and families. We welcome them. Thank you again.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak?
That was the last person signed up.
Okay. I see some in the audience, please come forward, like to speak.
Good afternoon. My name's Alvarez, Inaki Alvarez, 9218 Water Hazard Drive in Hudson. Yes, I was sworn in. Thank you, and thank you for the time. Very quickly, I am a homeowner. I'm not representing anybody else except other homeowners. So, we're a group of homeowners that want to see this project go forward. We look favorably upon it and agree with the presentations made by Jack and his group, our neighbors. The reason I'm speaking now is because a statement was made about pending on voting. And one of the reasons why the voting has not occurred yet is because there was misinformation given to the homeowners. And so, I'm stating that I'm worried that if we don't approve this or somehow continue to move forward and we wait on voting based on misinformation, that that will continue, and the rest of the residents will not get the right story. So, I'm not sure how that comes across to you. I'm sorry, I don't mean to be negative, but we've been dealing with this now for years. I live on the golf course. It's my backyard. And I'd like to see that cleaned out and have nice walking space for our neighbors and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public like to speak to this item? Is there anyone online?
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to close public comment. Back to the applicant? Applicant's good? All right, if I could, I'd like to talk about this a little bit. And five years ago, I was with the people from the whole development, and it was a scary moment as far as what was going to happen. A lot of things were talked about. We had staff there, attorney's office there to go through what could be done, what could be done. I want to say the leadership of Jack Bremet was phenomenal. Brought his people together, pushed forward to try to make the best of the situation. Karen, you're doing a great job with Fairway Oaks as well, bringing them together. And I appreciate your taking the time to listen, and I'm glad you asked for the advice of what our attorney would be able to take a look at it to get that, because I think it's going to help you guys take that step forward. When this first started, Fairway Oaks was kind of like left out, but they're now back in the mix to have the same options to get the property, just like the Estates does. They'll have the same options in the stormwater ponds to take out the trees if they so choose that the developer will take out as well. So, as much as the situation has changed dramatically for the folks, I think through the long run, through the work, our staff, I think, did a great job working step by step by step. I asked a lot of tough questions, and we did a lot of digging to try to make things happen. I even looked to a point where in case Fairway Oaks had trouble getting the property, they actually have the county be able to do an MSBU to take it over. We cannot do that, as guided by the attorney. So, we've got the best situation we could possibly get to benefit all the people, to bring a positive project forward. Nice thing is, the open space that's on our map H here, that's all going to be lots. It'll be 70 feet large, so they're not small homes either. It'll be a good quality home, like is in the neighborhood.
Well, I'm for it. You don't have to sell me.
No, I'm just, I want the people to hear. So, with all that said, it's been a long haul, but I'm glad we're to this point to actually put this behind us and let life go on, so.
So, we've seen similar things happen around the county, like in my neighborhood of Gulf Harbors, where we had a golf course go under. We didn't have an HOA. We had a voluntary civic association. So, we had to do a neighborhood vote and do an MSBU. It was contentious. It's, you know, half the people hate me in there, and some of the people are grateful, I think. It took us years to get it, but we finally have our park, and we're just getting ready to cut a ribbon on it. And I think it took seven years and eight years and six years of lawsuit, or I don't know, a long time. I just think you have the best possible resolution out there. I think it's wonderful. I thank the landowner and Barbara and your client for all working together. It's a great resolution, and I think you'll all be very happy with it. I think this is always a risk when you belong to a golf course community where it's not an equity club. Someone else owns it, someone else. You can't force someone to lose money. So, this was a great resolution. So, I don't know if you want to say anything, or I would make a motion. I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. Call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for the people in the HOAs, especially.
Can I ask the county administrator a question? I talked to you about P-51. Are we going to wait?
Mr. Chairman, we're going to pass the chairmanship?
Well, I asked him a question, so maybe he'd.
I'm going to bring it up.
Oh, you asked him to?
Well, it's the next item.
Come up on the normal routine, ma'am.
All right, okay.
So, P-51.
We have proof of publication of this matter in the March 13, 2024 edition of the Tampa Bay Times.
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that Mr. Goldstein put on the agenda. It follows the procedures that were outlined in the Senate bill. However, that Senate bill has not gone over to the governor's office yet for signature, and so I would recommend that you take public comment and continue this to your April 10 meeting at 1:30 or soon thereafter, as same may be heard in Dade City.
That would be my recommendation as well. Does that a motion?
I can't make a motion.
But we have to hear public comment first. So, I will make it after you do that.
Is there anyone here for public comment?
We have no one signed up in advance.
Anyone online? Anyone online?
No, sir.
We'll close public comment.
I make the motion to continue this item to April 10.
Don't you have to go somewhere?
I could have been there.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So you'll come out of your chair.
I don't want to mess that up anymore than...
That'll close our regular business and we'll go to committee reports. Commissioner Wade.
Pass.
I sent Sonia some photos. I don't know which one's going to come up. Okay, I did my CEO tour. I guess I'm not getting my picture from my husband. I know he sent it to me somewhere. So this is us actually on the roof of the Duke Power Plant over there on Anclot. We first went to Am Skills because some of these manufacturers had not been there. You might recognize Dan Tang from, yeah, and Art Hadigki, who used to be Vice President of Westinghouse Corporation. So former manufacturer. And we've got Metler Toledo, we've got a lot of other companies represented. The woman in the front is U.S. Water, Salya. And at Am Skills, we're working on tailoring a program for U.S. Water and other water utilities so that they can keep their talent pipeline going. That was pretty crazy going up that high. And so after Am Skills and after the Duke Power Plant, which is now a natural gas plant, it used to be oil. We went to the Anclot, Anclot Lighthouse. And, okay, this just blew my mind. That is the bulb that runs the lighthouse, the beam, which you can see for 14 miles, 16 miles on a clear day. Is that, isn't that insane?
It's nuts.
I, I just had to take a picture of that. So these are some townhomes. After our last meeting, I was, went to shops at Oakley Grove. I just, I actually went to look at the apartments that have been added back there. And I saw these townhomes, they're not connected in any way to all the retail there, which is a very set. Well, I think there's a pedestrian gate, but I had to drive all over the place to figure out how to get into these. But I wanted you to see what a single car garage with a double car driveway, what that kind of community ends up looking like. And I want you to notice the trees that are in there. Those are crepe myrtles. And so if, if this is, you know, if this was 60 to 80% AMI workforce housing, I'd say, ah, but this is market rate and this is not good for us.
These are the old rules?
These are just, wait, can you go back? These are under development now. I think Brad looked it up. But I think we allow the crepe myrtles right now, so.
Hi, Brad Tippett, play, I don't even know where I am anymore. Building Department. Yes, crepe myrtles are not allowed in the buffer along the roadways as a shade tree, but they are still allowed on lots where they want to use them as decorative trees or understory trees.
Okay, so I don't even call, that even shouldn't be a tree. So I would like to say now we need to strike that from that opportunity because that's what that looks like. They only have leaves on it through the summer and the rest of the year, they are bare and bald. And that is just, I, for me, that's a, that's a, okay, I'm known for just hitting it with a hammer. Not the most attractive townhome complex. Then this is in Wesley Chapel. There's another picture, not the, not that one. Didn't I send another one?
You don't like that one?
So there's another view of it and you can just see what we've done. And, okay, now you can go to their marketing one, which is the one with, that's what they, that's what they show is what they're going to look like. That's not what we got.
So just to, if I can just clarify that, I understand your concern in that, but these were literally just constructed and those are...
They're still under construction.
Brand new plants. They take time to mature. That's not what it's going to look like forever.
Brad, they only have leaves on them during the summer. Crepe myrtles drop in September, October, and they don't come back till May, June?
I disagree with that because I do have a crepe myrtle tree in my front yard that is higher than my house and drops things on my cars year round, but, but yes, there are certain species that...
There are a few species. I have one in my front, a queen, and sadly got, cost me, you know, $400 for that tree. That's not what they're putting it in here. It did get hit by the frost, but I just...
Our, our issue in these types of spaces, and we, we've talked about this pretty repeatedly, is we've, we've tried to move the, the powerful root trees to places they won't destroy the infrastructure, which pretty much leaves you with the understory trees and palms and things like that, yes.
The roots of these are different.
We don't have a way right now to say it has to be a palm or it can't be a crepe myrtle in, in the way our code is written. So if that is something that you want to pursue, this board wants to pursue, we can do that. I will say the development community generally pushed back on us when we kind of talked about that originally because they're, they are a very useful tree and they're a very colorful tree and, and they work as an ornamental tree in lots of locations where other trees just can't work. So, you know, if you want to pursue that, we can certainly...
I do, because when it's the only thing, it's not enough.
Okay.
It's just not enough. Palm tree will fit just fine right there.
Is that a, I mean, I could, we can talk...
Does anyone else agree?
Well, I'll agree with you as far as, I think if, if it is an understory tree that doesn't carry height, loses its leaves, I mean, I look at...
There's a legastram tree?
You look at US-19, they get all these trees, they're dead in the prime of the winter season, right? And I, I like that we put all the palm trees we did because they look better all year round. So I, I do agree with that point. I will say this though, as Brad, you just touched on a little bit, when you have limited amounts of concrete around you or limited, around, open space around you, the palm trees work better. And frankly, I think that's a great look right there.
Yeah. Makes a huge difference than what...
So we're okay with palm trees then, up front?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, make that a palm tree there.
You heard that?
Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure I got it.
The best, the best, if we make it as an option.
I think it's, I think it's worthy of discussion.
To mandate, are you saying mandate and/or?
Well...
Or if they wanted to offset every other? I like this look, but I mean, if both of them work for whatever reason...
I, I think you could, I think there are understory trees as well that don't drop their leaves like a legastram tree. There is a bottle brush tree, there's other, well, I have them.
Yeah, I know. We don't want them.
What? Bottle brush ours? Okay.
Leave them, yeah.
But a legastram isn't. And I, you know, but certainly not a crepe myrtle, not a tree that drops their, not a understory that drops their leaves. And, but if, you know, they can do it with palm trees, there's, there's little maintenance in this kind of situation. I think that's what they should be doing.
So we can, we can start working on that as, as far as a code change, that will take time. So the way to address that would be in the MPUDs as they come through.
Yeah.
You know, adding that language to say that, you know, in these spaces in front of townhomes, they should be something else, whatever is it the board wants, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I can add on, on to this, because there's another issue that, that is, has been bubbling up, which is what you're, and this is a perfect example, what you are shown in pictures...
Yeah.
At hearings, what Brad is shown on final site plans, when it gets over to Nick's section at survey and engineering, well, transportation engineering department. They only bond the land development code required landscaping. They don't bond what they are showing on their plans.
Yeah.
So there's no, if they don't put it in, other than a code violation for not filing their site plan, there's no, there is no bonding mechanism for those trees to be installed. And when the inspectors go out, they're inspecting not what's, I'm, what I'm told is, they're inspecting for what is land development code required, not what they have promised on their MPUDs.
So what I'm hearing is we might need a bond for the, separate bond for the landscaping.
Well, most of them are posting separate bonds for landscaping, but what they're posting is only that which is required. I see engineering estimates all the time that it's only that which is required for the land, by the land development code.
So how do you recommend we fix this problem?
I...
This is a, this is a pretty large scale problem because the, the bonds would be related to individual properties that are sold with those homes, those units.
Well, no, they're, they're posting, they're posting for their subdivisions.
Right, but they have to carry that bond until it's all done.
Right.
And all done, and they may be selling units before their last building is done. They're not going to do really bonds on these very individual units like that. It's a complicated issue. We've had some discussions about how to deal with it, how to deal with street trees too in front of these locations where you have driveways because they get damaged in the construction of the home. If you put them in early, if you bond them, you can't get rid of the bond until everything is built at the very end. So there's some kind of complex issues and we've been working with the stakeholders on how to figure that out. We don't really have a good solution yet, but we're still working to try and figure that out.
You know, I get that it can be very hard for staff to go back out, make sure every tree front has a, I mean, a tree in it. Look, look what happened in our county administrator's development in Bexley, where blocks of trees never made it in, right? I mean, no one caught it. So how do we hold someone accountable until everything is done?
I'm not sure exactly where you live in Bexley, but most of, most of Bexley was actually done back when our code still allowed for those lot trees to be anywhere on the...
These were street trees, I think.
Yeah.
They never put, they went back in after we, Polte came back and put them in, but it was years later.
So Commissioner Stark is asking a great question.
Yeah.
How do we make it so that when someone's going to move into one of these homes, that the landscaping, at least in front of their house, is done? Is that, is that hard?
So what we want and have...
Well, we'll work with the building construction team.
I see Roy's got some thoughts.
Mr. Chairman, so, so right now, when a, a single family building application comes in, they supply plot plan, which shows all the trees, which is verified, when the application is accepted, still add. Can you hear me?
We're checking to see if the recorder's picking up there.
I think we need to change those. I don't know why you have to press the button.
We don't have that much.
Oh, I want that too.
Whisper a rainbow and you'll wake up, you know.
Rolling a bus.
And final inspection before CO, our structural inspectors go out and get that plot plan out of the permit box and go, there's three trees on here, okay, there's, there's your three trees, there's your sidewalk, there's your sanitary clean out, et cetera.
But obviously, they're not doing that.
They are doing that.
Oh.
What is missing, and we had this discussion with the Builders Association just this past Monday, or excuse me, Monday, was the plot plans don't go in the right of way, they go to the back of sidewalk.
Oh.
And so the street trees that are included on the engineering plans aren't captured in that plot plan. So we had a discussion with the four or five people from the Builders Association to ask what, you know, what's the expense for you to extend your survey to take in the whole lot, including that four foot or six foot collar around the street that's technically in the right of way? And the answer was, the cost is like an extra $8. So we're working with the Builders Association to get the word out to when they make their plot plans, it will have those street trees on the plot plan. So our final inspection will capture them.
Okay, that's good.
Now, that's just one step. I will tell you also, a major discussion point we're having right now, we're having this, this process mapped through my team, is, is to how we create a database everybody can see. When MPUD conditions are, are made, how are those then transferred and accessible to the people doing the horizontal construction land review? And then how are those conditions and the approval letter, then those be seen by the BCS people who are doing the final, the final assessment of the mobility fee?
That's that.
So we, we want to have a unified condition of approval database that is accessible for everybody. And, and right now, we, we kind of have that, but it's not great. And so that doesn't answer your entire question, but it gets us moving in that direction.
Yeah, sounds good. I'm happy. Good, good job. Thank you, all of you.
Before we go a little further, I'm going to leave just item R-38. Keith and I was going to be presenting that today, but with Commissioner Oakley not here, Mr. Bradford not as well, he's going to bring that back another time.
Yeah. Okay. And then I have trails. Let me think what I was going to say about trails. Gosh, I can't even remember what I was going to say. Oh, yes. So I went and had lunch with my, with Charles Hines from Trust for Public Lands and, and Nick joined us. And I, and how many people does Sarasota County have?
Population?
Yeah.
350.
Are they as big as us?
No, they're not as big as us. They, they never were as big as us.
Yeah.
I think they're, they were 400-ish.
Okay, so I said, you know, that was a really pretty bike pad overpass that you showed us. How did that get, who paid for that? And he said that they paid for that one with Obama dollars because they had a shovel-ready project. And I said, is that the only one you have in your county? He said, oh, no, we have at least four or five with two more getting ready to go. And I said, and who paid for those? And he said DOT. Because they don't, they, they don't want their people crossing at grade on busy highways and roads. So what is wrong with us? What is, what is it about us? Are we not asking right that our citizens have to pay out of our own penny for Pasco to get these trails over these State Road 52, State Road 54? It's just, I don't get it and I'm really hoping something's going to change here. And if we have to go to Tallahassee and speak to the head of DOT, actually, I'm having dinner tomorrow with Secretary Prasad, who used to be head of DOT. And I just want to understand what, why we have three times the population, maybe twice the population.
489 is their, is their current population. They are the 14th largest county in the state.
I mean...
But they're behind us.
Yeah. So he's getting me all the information on who paid for those, Nick, Nick's going to work on that. And also in Pinellas County, where they have more of them under construction as we speak. And I think the state is paying for them on the coast-to-coast trail. And so I just really am going to bang that gong until the cows come home or whatever. So I did drive State Road 52 with DOT last week. We started in Angeline and went all the way, almost to 301, looking at the Cogan grass. And they're going to come and make a quick presentation to us in Dade City. And I already talked to the county administrator and we'll have some staff there and they're talking about how they deal with it and they have some good ideas for us and, and you'll hear their plans for how to deal with it, but the problem is getting worse and worse and worse and we, we really have to address it. I put Holiday, oh, Holiday Park. Okay, so we did get our 30% drawings now of the Anclot River Park, as I mentioned before, and Keith and I will be holding a, what's probably going to be a very raucous town hall at the Civic Center on April 15th, so. And we'll go over the plans and I think everyone will be happy to see 400 parking spaces have come out of there. And there's a lot less pavement and a lot of trees going in, being saved. And so we'll try and move that ball forward.
Very good.
Yeah.
Is that all?
I, I think there was something else, but I'll reserve the right to come back in a second. Oh, yes, Ralph Laird. Can I, can I go on?
Go ahead.
I heard from Katie, who I think left, left a little early. She went to the Kona meeting and she said there is a bill going through that preamps us from regulating trucks and commercial vehicles in people's front yards. And I wondered if you had a chance to do any more research on that one.
That was the HOA bill?
I'm not sure if that's...
It is.
It is?
It is.
Because what if you don't have an HOA?
It only addressed HOAs. For the first time ever, the legislature actually addressed an HOA issues. And within that, they did put an issue in there regarding parking that HOAs could not deny individuals for bringing in their work vehicles.
Crazy.
I think it was geared toward law enforcement vehicles, but the way they wrote the, the legislation was up to 26,000 pounds in a certain class category. But I think it's, you know, it's going to be your individuals that may have like a county car or a work car or a police, you know, like I said, a police vehicle. Those were being denied by HOAs in their neighborhoods.
Okay, so I thought Katie and...
car, or a work car, or, or a police, you know, like I said, a police vehicle. Uh, those were being denied by HOAs in their neighborhoods.
Okay, so I thought Katie and Nat Kona, they had, they were alarmed because it could be the front cab of a, uh-
It could go up to that height because they went up to 26,000, you know, feet in a certain category that they allowed to.
So, so if you drive, you know, what do they call those long-haul cab things?
Yeah.
I, I don't know what that-
It had to be, uh, it had to be a two-actual-
Tractor trailer?
No, like if you, you're, you're hauling merchandise, a semi.
But it had to be a two-actual vehicle, not if it's over two axles, it was not.
But you could have the front of it-
Yes.
-in your driveway now, in a neighborhood.
Ralph?
I think we should oppose this.
Ralph?
Yes.
Was it a preemption strictly on HOAs?
Just the HOAs.
So, so their land development code would still control?
Right. All I mentioned is HOAs, you know, within it, so.
So we can still say they can't be in a, any neighborhood?
If it only preempted HOAs from regulating it, then, then your land development code wouldn't be affected. If they, if they did both of us, then, yeah.
No.
But I'd have to look at it.
I mean, and she said school buses, and I mean, great, these are pretty big things. I mean, uh, Kona was very alarmed, so I, I, I don't want to see that in the neighborhoods.
All right, county administrator, Mr. Carbella.
Couple of items. The, uh, the first item here is matched by Taxpayer Posano with regards to Senate Bill 770, which makes, uh, some modernization here of the 14-year-old base program.
Yeah.
Supporting some more consumer protections. And he was asking if the board would not find sending to the governor's office a letter of support in order to, you know, sign the bill that hasn't made it to the governor's desk yet. But Senate Bill 770 expands consumer protections for foreign homeowners, uh, which include or not limited to additional disclosure requirements and increased contractor oversight while providing more information to the property owner to ensure they have better access to information about the base program before deciding whether or not that financing option is right. You know, to recall, it basically allows the contract to be on the property and there have been, uh, you know, Taxpayer Posano has actually taken upon himself to provide a lot of additional disclosures, but Senate Bill 770 actually codifies some of those. So we got, he asked if the board would encourage to put that, I have a letter of, of support sent to the governor's office that if the board like, uh, we'd like the, he would actually chair to sign it so we can send it forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Go with that? Okay, I'll sign it.
The other item I had is just a reminder that, uh, we're bringing a resolution forward on April 10th with regards to the next tri-county workshop with built from Pinellas County that is scheduled for April 19th. Uh, we will be doing it at Ruth Becker Hall, the next one I think we'll have it up in Tascow County. Uh, and it'll be 9:30 to 12, it should be on your calendars. Uh, right now, we'll be talking about-
The legislative wrap-up, um, which may include some discussion on Live Local, opioids, uh, the MPO merger, Tampa Bay Water, as well as just idea exchange. So, more to come, but just wanted to remind you that that is coming. Uh, April 19th.
When, when did you book that?
Oh, boy, don't start with me, sir.
Oh, yeah.
No, no, well, it's, it's kind of-
It's on my calendar.
Because I, look, I had my calendar clear, I didn't see it. And I changed my plans, so it's okay now, but I was almost like planning to go away from like a month ago.
Back me up here.
It's all right, I'm just saying. Anyway, I'm, I'm okay with the date.
All right, thank you, sir. Do I have anything else?
Yeah.
So, I do, I, I do need the board to authorize us to issue, Jeff, if I mess anything up here, let me know, a notice of intent to award. We, uh, at the jail, we needed to change food vendors, and so we have, uh, we have gone through, uh, another process to hire a new food vendor. Uh, that contract will be coming back before the board, but if we get the notice of intent to award out now, that gives the, the vendor some assurances that this will be coming back to the board for, for approval of the contract. Uh, but it's, it's a purchasing formality, is my, my understanding that I need board authorization for.
Mr. Chairman, I would also authorize the county, county administrator to sign a contract if one is, is available before your next board meeting.
That would allow us uninterrupted service to, to provide food to the inmates.
Okay, Mr. Stocker?
Uh, just wondered if you wanted to share if there was anything, um, any updates on Wiregrass Ranch sports?
Let's, let's deal with this issue we got right now.
What are they doing?
Yeah. So, so they, they, they need, he needs the authorization to be able to sign a food contract with the vendor.
Oh, you need a motion?
Yes.
So moved?
What's the price?
The price difference is less than two cents a meal.
Over the current vendor?
Over the current vendor.
But what is the annual, we, we had an annual cost, I thought.
Hold on. Eric, I don't know if you have it. It's, it's under $2 million, I believe.
I can talk about Wiregrass if you want while we wait for that, if that's all right? So, I'm sorry, did you have a specific question, ma'am?
No, I just thought you were meeting with them, I just wondered if there's-
No, no, uh, so, so our, I know Attorney Goldstein and some of our staff met, met with, with the porters. Uh, the meeting went very well, it was very collegial and cordial, and, uh, I think we're all working together towards mutual, mutual, same mutual ends, so, um, I think we're on the same page.
Right. Um, and also, I wanted to say, I had mentioned to the administrator that Naco is here this summer in July in Tampa. And if we have any good projects to put up for awards in any of the departments, this is the best one to really put something good forward, I don't know what that might be, but, because then you can be here present to, to be there to get your award, so, um, they always do best practice awards, which I always love going to and listening, so. Um, that is in July in Tampa.
If you could come back to me on the other matters, so that would be great, we'll just-
All right. And Mr. County Attorney, Jeff?
Um, would you want me to bring up the procedural rules?
Uh, sure.
So, as the, the acting chair and I were talking at the lunch break, um, it is probably a good idea to add a second vice chair to your procedural rules, um, so that there is somebody to step in should the chair and vice chair not be available in person for a meeting. There are many five-member boards that have a, have that additional second vice chair for those contingencies. We haven't, for, for whatever reason, over the years. You don't go beyond that because you wouldn't have a quorum if you had, had to have a third vice chair. Um, so we can, we can amend your rules and, um, we can provide a draft amendment to your rules for your April 10th meeting, if that's the desire of the board.
It's probably not a bad idea.
It definitely was needed today.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Yeah.
Let's bring that back.
We'll be, we'll do that for you.
All right.
That's all I had. Thank you.
That's all? Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Uh, we have nothing at this time.
Okay. Still digging over there? Okay, so I'll do my committee report. Do you have the pictures of the derelict boats? Perfect. So, we had a great work done with Curtis Franklin with Parks and Rec and Fish and Wildlife. Uh, that is the last derelict boat, uh, out of Signal Cove, done last week, March 20th. So a big steel-hulled boat that was sunk, uh, took it out. I'm gonna ask if we can bring up, maybe in a very short period of time, Mr. County Attorney, updating our county derelict boat ordinance. We've got St. Petersburg, that's, the city of St. Petersburg has done one. Um, I can get that to all of us, if we can take a look at it and get the county attorney's office, but it may be one we want to adopt, or at least consider it. Maybe the next meeting, we can have a further discussion on it, to what your thoughts are. All right. And you have the pictures of the Chasco Parade? So the Chasco Parade, that's, uh, myself there with my dad.
Oh.
Eighty, eighty-two years old, just having a good time out there.
I was noticing the barricades.
I was gonna say, notice the, notice the barricades, it's all about the barricades. But I'll tell you what, uh, keep on rolling through the pictures. Mr. Mallow there, uh, ROTC.